Let's call a meeting to order. First item of business, if you turn off your cell phones. Next item is the claims. Is there a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
About the minutes.
Probably should do those.
Yeah, we probably should.
Is there a motion on the minutes?
I'd move on a minute.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go around. Need a motion on the memorandum of personnel transactions?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ed and I are here to talk to you about the secure websites that we would like to get established so that we can comply with the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, HIPAA and GINA. I receive information every week that includes medical information and other important information, and I now file it and save it securely, but my fear is to have it when it comes from Wellmark to us, it's an open website. I'd like to have that be secure. Going through that, I've worked with John Malloy, and he's given me some information. I've also had Ed look it over, and I'll let him speak to it, but the information that we get every week needs to be more secure than it is now.
Key, I think, with it all is that you need to be able to transmit and receive the information securely. The good news is solid, secure folder set up for her to store everything so that no one can tap into the information there. That would be a direct violation if anyone else were able to access that, privacy laws as well. So that's the most important thing. The second piece of it is establishing the ability to transmit that information securely to the stop-loss carrier or to Wellmark or to someone else. We have the ability to send that information to you guys on a secure basis, but then for Gore to initiate that sending is very difficult. It looks like this is designed to address that. I would like to, if I could, talk to John directly and make sure that we've got everything covered there, but it looks like that makes sense.
Who do you have do that?
This is John Malloy.
Oh, okay.
Working with John Malloy.
It would be him that we would work with to send the paper. I just wanted to make sure it complies with the law.
Yeah.
If I missed anything. I also want to make sure that we're not doing, we're not spending any money that we don't need to spend.
Yeah, it's with Zickclerk. In the first year is sixteen thousand eight hundred.
It's for a three-year agreement, and that's the first year.
It's fifty-six hundred, I think, for the first year.
Right. Three-year, right.
And a three-year sixteen.
Right. That's a three-year agreement.
Okay.
So you're just asking permission, you know, to work with John Malloy upstairs to, you know, to develop this security?
Well, and to get this agreement signed, and we're committing for the money.
Turn to people that are doing target, I hope.
No. No.
Well, I would move it.
Second.
Because we do have to secure that information. Absolutely.
Dennis?
WPIO health insurance policy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is the lifting of a tax suspension for CJ.
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd move on to resolution to tax suspension on YS.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a notice of property sale.
What date is that set for?
July 7th.
Of January?
Yeah.
Ten fifteen, seventh day of January.
Move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion for seventh day of January at ten seventeen for parcel two four oh nine seven five.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of appointments to boards and commissions, conservation. Cindy Bennett has applied for reappointment. She was appointed to build up the balance of the term.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have an opening on the Sioux Land District Board of Health. Do we have anybody for that?
Not that we know of yet, they're looking.
I think that, yeah, I'm the representative for the board, but I think we have to have a, I think Dr. Nitz has retired, he's not going to be, so we have to have another doctor there in that position. So what I think we'll do is probably work with Kevin Greaves to find another representative from the medical community. I think by statute, we have to have a medical physician on the board. So can we leave that open for a couple of weeks?
Yeah, until you come back with them. On the commission to assess damages, category B, C, and D are all full, but we have in category A, owner-operator agricultural property, we need one there. Donald Johnson is not applying for reappointment. So...
Anybody for that?
Nope.
Anybody's got any names or bring them forward?
Now, that person has to be from...
It has to be agriculture.
An agriculture. Out there in the unincorporated area?
I believe so.
Okay.
Go ahead and approve the rest of the positions, and we'll just have the one open. So need a motion on commission to assess damages.
Move it.
Second.
Can we do all those at one shot? B, C, and D. A, B, C, and D. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good morning.
Good morning, John.
Back on December 5th, your board forwarded to the zoning commission the request to review the 2013 plan amendment to our urban renewal plan, in light of it being consistent with our general development plan, which we adopted in 2005. On the 18th, the commission met, reviewed, and voted in the affirmative to recommend to you that it does coincide and is consistent with the changes you plan to make in the geographic area that the plan applies to. We're doing this because of a statutory requirement, and I am providing your board with the required written documentation from the Act of Care, which is only commissioned indicating their decision. Any questions?
There's no formal action to be taken here, correct?
No. You just simply accept the written recommendation.
Move to accept.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Butler, I think we're close enough on time. Why don't you come up?
We have several different things we have to do today to adopt this amendment to our urban renewal area. First one will be a public hearing, which is agenda item A. I know we have Superintendent Sergeant Wood School's here. I don't know if he wants to speak in a public hearing. He has stepped out here. Yeah, hold on.
Now, this pertains to what?
This would actually be the public hearing, required by law to have, give the public input, if they want any suggestions, complaint, oral presentation, anything like that. So it's just a public hearing, sorry. If I went and stepped out, let it know that...
No comments?
Rod, this is where you have the opportunity to make comments. This is a public hearing, how the renewal area did you have here?
No, just here to find out exactly what's going on in the area as far as TIP and development. I see on top of what's going on.
Just so, we're in the public hearing, so the board knows we have satisfied or required to get the approval by the two mile limit on savings. That's the approval. We have that with landowners, we have approvals there. We're still waiting for one that's supposed to be here today, so if it doesn't get here today, you'll be excluded from the urban renewal area. We'll just take the parcel out, but we'll give at least today to make a decision on that. We did consult the two school districts by law, and that's it.
Okay.
And we did the claims open, so we go Wednesday, did that.
I need a motion to adopt the resolution.
Or go out of hearing?
Out of hearing first.
Move to go out of the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Well, I would make a motion to adopt the resolution on resolution A to approve 2013 urban renewal planning amendment for the Liberty Park Urban Renewal Area.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Denny, there has to be three motions on this?
Now, we have to do the, they introduce, yes, because we approved the resolution, now we got to prove the ordinance for the diversion taxes, plus a second, third reading, we have to suspend that, so we'll go to the next one, which is B, where you actually introduce the ordinance, entitled the ordinance for the diversion of tax, division of taxes, levy on taxable property in the 2013 amendment to the Liberty Park Urban Renewal Area, presumed section 403.19 of the Code of Law. Have you had a motion there?
I'd move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Okay, the next one would be, we have to have three readings and a request to suspend the second, third reading, and that would be a motion by a board member that the statute ordered a rule requiring ordinance to be considered and voted on for passes at two board meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended.
I'd move that.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
The last motion will be the motion to actually approve this ordinance, because you've now put off or suspended the last two, so you're finally adopting the ordinance, and we will have more of this number for that.
Their motion.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Have we got it all done, Patrick? Or do you need individual votes?
No, we've got those, but I actually got five motions and then four hundred. One was to close the public hearing.
Right.
Right, you gotta have a public hearing and close, so that'd be actually two motions there, if it's all part of the first phase.
That was the first motion.
Right. I got that. You okay, Joshua?
I think we're okay.
All right.
Okay.
And for the benefit of Sergeant Wood School District, anybody else, what this does, it does amend our urban renewal area to expand it to larger areas, includes 515 acres of leave in that vicinity. And what it does, it actually gives the board the ability to help with roadway reconstruction, new roads, water sewer, even the economic loans, the people that like to develop here, they could apply for something like that. But, and if they're in the increment needed, we do release it to the taxing bodies. So right now, we do have 800,000 obligated for the road, the transfer from general basic to the increment area, which constructs a new road coming in to CF. Other than that, we don't have anything else to obligate at this point in time. We do have road right next spring, it's going to be repaired on Fort Neil Circle, which is included in this urban renewal area. But does expand it to help people out, there's actually no detriment to anybody, because the tax, usually we'll release, it's all increment tax, all new revenue coming in from new assessments generated through businesses.
Rod, your question is what effect this will have on the school district?
Yeah.
Mr. Butler, can you sit down with him and...
Yes. And we did, I did meet with them on another issue that Sioux City had, where they may have changed the policy, how they divided out the increment. We did meet on that, went through that a little bit, or quite a bit. And also, there's new taxes coming on board that's not included in these, which is called excise tax, which is something that, you know, we've talked about tax increment, but excise tax, which utility, we can through those urban renewal areas. So this will money that won't be touched, it won't go off the school district, all tax bodies, except Woodbury County, because we agreed to give back our portion of that excise tax. And that was the next one, when they gave it to us, so we'll see what it is when it actually comes reality.
Okay.
Dennis has done a great job communicating with the school district. Rod.
Appreciate that.
Our goal is transparency, and that's all we want to do.
Absolutely.
That's all you have.
All right.
Thanks, Danny. Did you bring along your own easel?
I brought along props.
That was good thinking.
And I, first of all, want to thank you for listening to my plea. There's six of them there, George. Pass them around. I'm here to garner your support, hopefully, for a project that I am very deeply involved in and called The Shepherd's Garden. Where do you want it?
On the other side, just.
Ah.
Thank you.
Yep. Appreciate that. And I'm hoping that you are all somewhat familiar with it, but it's the old YWCA lot at Sixth and Jackson, and, well, I'll just read the mission, which is to facilitate and encourage spiritual respite and reflection by developing a permanent Christian green space for the community of Sioux City. And rather than read the brochure to you, which you're very capable of reading, let me just kind of tell you how we got to where we are right now, and then very briefly describe what our vision for the park is. Conceptually, it was thought of by Dr. Paul Johnson, who's a surgeon in town at Mercy, and at the time, the property was owned by Mercy. Not sure what their intent was for that property, but whatever it was, they discarded it. Dr. Johnson talked to someone at Mercy, I'm not sure who, about his vision for this, and then he approached the minister at First Presbyterian Church, which obviously is a neighbor as well, and Matthew Miller, and he bid on it big time. And at that point, they raised $150,000 and formed a 501(c)(3) with a separate board of directors, my wife being one of the original members, Dr. Johnson, Spencer, I can't think of his name, from Mercy, anyway. And through generosity of a few families' names you'd recognize, they raised $150,000, and that was enough to buy the property from Mercy and then also get a conceptual drawing done by Carl Van Kura of Midwest Design. That was about two, three years ago, and the project just kind of sat idle until a year ago, right now, in January, and we started going out fundraising, and we think this entire park, which includes, if we raise enough money, which includes on the upper level, where there used to be an alleyway, a, what's the word, a community garden. But if we don't raise enough money, then we'll just do the main garden. And at this point, including the original 150, we have raised over $600,000, and we think, we don't have final numbers yet, but we think the project's going to be about $810,000. So we've gone a long ways. We've done, I'm very pleased with how we've been able to do it, and like any fundraising cause, we've got a few very nice gifts to get us going, but now we're to the point where we've kind of exhausted those and need to ask for small, more modest sums. So we're applying for a Vision Iowa. I think we're in great shape. We're applying for a Vision Iowa, which is really why, one of two reasons why I'm here. In order to get Vision Iowa grants, you have to have support from both the city as well as the county. I met with the city in the summertime, and they have committed to getting us water, and there are a couple of water features within the garden, and also new sidewalks, so their commitment to the project's pretty significant. And really, I'm here because I'd love to have some financial help as we try to wrap this up, and I need a letter to stick in my Vision Iowa book that says you guys like this thing. So there's a 3D drawing in your packet. What you're looking at there, the first page is what it would, what the garden would look like as you're walking from the alleyways on Sixth Street.
Okay.
Right, and so you're kind of looking into the garden, but if you turn to the next page, you really see a better view of the entire garden. And we'll just start down here. Obviously, First Presbyterian Church is here. You're kind of looking at it from atop the Commerce Building, and so you'll have a space, about a 20 by 20 space opening here, and then a very gradual rising sidewalk all the way through till you get to a raised patio right on the corner of Sixth and Jackson. And along the way, there are Calvary Crosses with a water feature kind of in the left corner, which would be the alley, and then as you walk along, there, you've got a cascading waterfall with a bridge over it. These shadow boxes are already out of the design, they cost too much. There's a lot where we're retaining, the retaining walls, and even there's some walls coming out back in the corner, and we're going to put a pergola over that, and then again, there'll be this patio that kind of, maybe about 10 feet over the green space in the middle. It's really going to be a cool project. You guys know how bad that site has looked for the last 20 years, and we've got a lot of momentum. And if we can get the Vision Iowa money, the heavy lifting is done. If we don't, then I've got some more work to do, but I'm committed to the project, and we'll get it done. So I guess I'm here asking you for some money. I don't know what's appropriate. I'll let you guys decide. In my very selfish view, five to 10 grand would be great. Whatever, you know, that's not my call, but I also, kind of in a hurry, would love to have a letter of support that I can stick into the Vision Iowa grant application. Any questions?
What was your, what was your application to the Vision Iowa? How much was that?
We're asking for $150,000.
$50,000 from them? Okay, you probably said that.
And, no, I didn't say it, but it is $150,000, and the way Vision, I didn't know this, you guys probably do, but the way Vision Iowa works, it's your last dollars you need to raise, and that's kind of where we're at. It's very much where we're at. I think we're a perfect match for it.
I think in order to get the Vision Iowa grant, you have to have a financial commitment from the city and the county.
Yes.
And I think we could take $5,000 out of lost funds if that's the desire of the board.
Time with me. I'd move it.
I'd second it. I think this is a really nice development for the downtown area, Garrett.
Thank you. I mean, I think patients and families at Mercy will use it a lot. Obviously, First Presbyterian Church wants it because it's such an eyesore, but it's a place for people to go and have lunch, little receptions. It is spiritual, but it's not in your face. It's not Queen of Peace. It's a park, and our vision, well, one thing I've also left out, which I'm very pleased, is we've done some demolition and hauled in some dirt to get it ready for winter, but Klinger has agreed to be the contractor, and I got John Gleason's support, you know it's going to be done well, and that's my goal, you know, clearly. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks, Garrett.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks.
Garrett and I had a conversation a while back, and he has offered to give us a tour of American popcorn sometime in the spring, and I think that'd be great.
Yeah.
We'd love to do that, and yeah, let it, let it dry, oop, here, asshole's around. It'll dry up in the spring, and then, and then we'll...
All right, good. Get a little warmer.
All right.
Next item is township clerk.
Yes. Received the appointment of the Grange Township Clerk, Sandy Brower.
I'd move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Regina.
Good morning.
Morning.
Glad to see you didn't freeze to death on the way in.
Yeah. Don't get frostbitten.
Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, that's unusual.
I know, I know, I'm trying. Okay, so the reason I'm here today is to propose allocation of the allowance fund for the Woodbury County Jail Security Controls Project. There's a current contract amount, and within that amount, there is a, an allowance fund. And recently, the controls are in place, however, the doors are providing false alarms. So we've had the contractor investigate why this is happening, and it comes down to existing conditions, and they have found that if they make a slight modification to the cell doors, there's a correction to the problem. However, this is not a part of the original contract amount, and we would like to allocate funds from the allowance for this part of the project. So it'll involve 89 cell doors that...
How many?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine of them?
Eighty-nine, yep. And so what's happening is the doors are wired to the switch on the door, and they need to be wired to the locking bolt in order to read correctly in the security controls. And so this work rewires each of the cell doors so that they will read correctly on the monitoring software. And the contractor is estimating a maximum of three days of work, and each of those days will be about $3,000, and they're estimating about $2,000 in materials. So we're... dollars, and they're estimating about two thousand dollars in materials, so we're requesting a maximum allocation of about eleven thousand dollars for the work and the materials.
I'd move it.
I'll second it for discussion, but, I mean, wh, why wasn't that the contractor's responsibility to do it right in the first place?
That's a good question, it's not that he hasn't done it the right way in the first place, it's one of those unforeseen circumstances, so each jail has its own conditions, and in this condition, the wires were hooked to a different part of the door, and that's not wrong, uh, it's just an existing condition, and the controls were reading that switch correctly, however, it wasn't functioning in a secure way, so, for example, a door was reading unsecure, but in actuality, it was secure, and it's simply because of what part of the door was wired, once the wiring was talking to the lock of the door, then it began to read correctly.
Man.
I know, it took me a little bit to understand exactly what was happening.
But I, I know it needs to be fixed, because we have to have the place locked up, you can't have, you can't have prisoners coming out, but gee whiz, I mean, that just sounds like the contractor made a boo-boo there, he should have known how to wire a door to make it correct.
That, okay, let me help you understand a little bit better, those doors were wired back in nineteen eighty-seven, and they weren't wired incorrectly.
They weren't then in nineteen eighty-seven?
No, and they're still not.
But this is a new modification.
They're still not wired incorrectly, however, in order for these controls to let the staff members know, is that door locked or unlocked, it really needs to be talking to the lock, and not a switch, the switch simply says that this door is opened or closed, and the county doesn't really care if it's opened or closed, they care if it's locked or unlocked, and so that requires a changing of the wiring of each of these doors.
I won't. This is actually a pretty cheap fix. Okay, I won't talk about it.
I feel that the amount is very reasonable.
Is this done?
I do not know, but, um, I do know that, uh, they have indicated that this amount is what they will do the work for.
Do we have the money in our contingency to?
We, we do, if you, if you notice here, I've got some amounts, uh, listed for you, the current balance of the contingency is fifteen thousand seven hundred, and so this is about eleven thousand, so you'll have about forty-five hundred left in your contingency.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay.
I am going to take on the task of finishing the county's multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, and in order for me to do that, our resolution needs to be signed by the county accepting me to assume those responsibilities. We're about near the finish line on them, the state has requested a six-month extension to FEMA, and that has been granted, but they have assured me that those plans should basically be done in ninety days, because all FEMA needs is a few technical changes, but the six-month extension is so we can get that paperwork done, and there is a lot of paperwork to finish it up, so.
I've been involved in this, and it's a nightmare, um, originally, Simcoe tried to do it, uh, it's very complex, formed it out to J E O, um, J E O got in over their head, however, they do, I think, seventeen other areas in addition to what we're doing, they didn't get it done timely, and FEMA changed the rules after Sandy, so they had to go back and redo a lot of the stuff because the rules of the game got changed, so it is now on target, although it does create some issues with some communities, because you can't apply for federal money without this mitigation thing, so, it's a complete nightmare, but I think we finally got it figured out.
I think we are, FEMA's offered to, um, along with Homeland Security, provide more technical assistance this time, to make sure we get it to the finish line and done, so.
Yeah, I would move that, uh, Sharon could be designated as the person to complete this.
Thank you so much, I think.
You lucky duck.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, we now come to the part of hearing of any individual or group that wish to make a presentation to the board of items not on the agenda.
I want to thank you for, uh, uh, the, uh, support that you gave on going forth in that lawsuit, uh, I know I talked to some of you before, and I get dollars and cents, but there's times that it's worth the battle, and it, and it proved right. The men and women that work in the jail have a very tough job, and I think we all agree, and, uh, there are men and women of great integrity, and they followed our policy and procedures, and those guidelines are guidelines, you know, we, we try to get, to do our checks in a timely manner, but they're guidelines, and, uh, so I know, uh, they're appreciative that they were able to be vindicated, and although we may have another one coming up and down the road, I would really compliment, uh, John Gray and Heidman Law Firm, they did an outstanding job, they're, I have a lot of confidence in them, and I, uh, even though this happened before I was sheriff, trust me, I'll be here another time, I'm sure, that's just the nature of the business, but, uh, very good law firm, and, uh, really, uh, uh, very supportive, and, and, you know, they believed in our cause as well, so, just want to thank you guys for seeing it through.
You're welcome.
Have a good Christmas.
Appreciate it.
Same, you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
I want to talk to you about Benson's, that property with the first, unbudgeted item, the claim will be coming through for you, but just to give you a heads up on this, this is after the.
Big piece of equipment you want to buy?
Yeah.
I'm sure it's in your budget?
No, it's not in my budget, that's a whole other thing.
Looks like a B3 Hammond organ.
Yeah, it does.
Uh, what it is, is a plotter, uh, in order to print out maps, Dennis has been using this a lot extensively lately, uh, the city used to have one, uh, we, uh, and we had one down in the city assessor's office to use for mapping, and both of those have gone kaput at this point, and so now the guy that's printing, Bob Hines, printing all the maps out for Dennis, has to run out to the Security Institute every time to grab one of these, so we're moving the mapping, uh, G I S guy down to our office, but in order to have the equipment there and respond to everybody's needs for those maps, we need to replace that piece of equipment.
Those maps are pretty vital, because you always find out, especially with our increment districts, you can find out what's in there, what's not out there, we have found some that aren't in there, should have been in there, we are getting those in place now, it won't affect our release or anything like that, but example of a map is like the one hanging on a wall right there, that's example, I actually get printed, you can bear that about twice that big, and they actually work for overlays, things like that, where you put school districts over them, you can have a school district print out, you can see if somebody's in the right district or wrong district, you can do it for the increment districts, and there's a lot of other uses to it, if something's really needed, we don't have, and with individuals going down to Matt's office the first of January, part, we do need this, I suggest we buy out Riverboat Funds.
And what is, uh, the thing that's really good about it is that you can light up a parcel, any parcel, uh, and it prints out in color to tell you what taxing district is, and so Dennis can easily pick out, uh, when there's a tax district that is in the wrong, uh, area, in the tick district, and that's, before, that was what mapping was all about, to identify those areas that we can, uh, correct.
Uh, something else Simcoe is doing, they have a new gal, Kathy that's doing the G I S stuff, and she is organizing, or she's a part of a group organizing the, uh, flyover for those maps, uh, from like Omaha up through our five counties, and Nebraska, South Dakota Union, and Dakota, uh, if we can get that done, it's going to be substantially cheaper, because that's outrageous, what they charge to do that flyover, so she's working on that.
She's working on the assessor's, too.
Yeah.
Also, if we do maps, you know, somebody may come in quest, uh, business or something, get a map of this, I assume we probably could charge a reasonable fee, but generally somewhere, we'll print maps.
Absolutely.
That's what they have done, yeah, it's correct.
It's going to be located in your office, Matt?
Yeah.
Old Court's office, yeah, okay.
Now, the one in the city assessor's office beyond repair?
That's been gone for a couple of years or something, so then they were using the one of the city, and the city, I don't know what they're going to do, if they want to get from us, they'll charge them copies.
And then you're talking about a three-year service agreement, is that correct?
Yeah, and that will be budgeted, that will be budgeted tomorrow, yeah, I'm blanking stats.
You're going to make the call on that, that, all you're doing here is asking for the eighty-three sixty-nine to purchase it.
Yeah, we can't have a hope, if we get consensus, we at least get orders, so it'll be here in time when we get it, because the claim will come through and prove it at that time.
Right. Is there a motion?
There is.
I don't think you need a motion, I just think it, it's just consensus of support.
Just a heads up.
Pay the bill with a heads up?
Nope. Yes, that says device, we'll do it through Riverboat Funds, and the claim will be submitted for official approval.
John?
Uh, is this something Lanning and Zoney could participate in or use, or?
I would think so.
Just tied to all heating layers?
Yep.
We can pull anything?
Yep.
Lanning and Zoney be very supportive of this company.
Another source of revenue.
Another source of revenue, right.
Check that out on the maintenance.
So you just want a consensus?
Yeah.
We've got, you've got three of us here, and I think the three of us are.
And your vote on the claim officially when it comes, before, and we'll alert you to the claim, too.
Okay.
Riverboat.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishes to be heard? Is there a motion?
I move we go into closed session under, uh, section twenty-one point five, parent one, parent A.
Second.
General relief.
Call the roll. Aye.
Monson?
Aye.
Boykin?
Aye.
Good morning.